To a regular meeting of the Board of Education for August 12th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you please join me in standing for the pledge allegiance. Scott, will you leave us out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turning to the agenda. Right off the bat, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Karen Henner as interim district clerk effective August 12th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item C, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Tracy Leone as deputy district clerk effective August 12th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, moving along, routine matters. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following routine matters. Board of Education minutes in the CSC recommendations with the dates given in your agenda packets. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, presentations. Number one, Capitol Project Update, and I will turn it over to the gentleman from Turner Construction.
Evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, I'm Vincent Danowski, project manager with Turner Construction.
And I'm Robert Papriano, I'm the project engineer here, so it's very nice to meet you.
We also have with us Chris Bray, who is our executive out of our Syracuse office. Just to give you an update on the project, so exterior, I'm sure you've seen it coming in. Site improvements are going very well. The north lobby, ES drop-off, we call it, is progressing. That'll be ready for school. They're looking at paving August 20th. They did some more concrete today. The new lot, the high school drop-off, is progressing well. That's slated for asphalt August 25th. What's not going to be ready, so they'll have brand-new parking lots, new sidewalks, which is the key thing. You had a parking lot before, we want kids to be excited about when they come back to school. What are they going to see? They want new pavement, they want striping. That's going to happen. Landscaping, typically you're landscaping, your trees, your plantings, even your grass at home, you want to plant it in May or October. Those are your prime planting times, and that's when we're going to see the landscaping coming in. That allows time for light poles to come in. We have light pole bases going in to enhance the lighting that you didn't have before, and then the light poles themselves will come in September. And then the exterior cooler freezer, we made an early decision in the project to keep that active instead of temporarily relocating it and spending money to try and do that. So we left that active until the new cooler freezer online. Once that happens, that'll come down, we'll do that demolition. Inside the building, the cafeteria and kitchen area, progressing along. As you know, coming out of the gate, we were late to bid with SED approval. We've been tracking materials, it was always a concern. What we had talked about up front was trying to get a shelf space for the kids when they come back in September. Working with the district and some of the unforeseen conditions we bumped into and tracking the material lead times and equipment right now, we're looking at what's best for the kids. Do they come into a shelf space that's unfinished, it's not as feasible to work around it, or keep them where they're already set up in a temporary serving room for a few more weeks and really get that space done? So when they come back, it's a wow factor into that space, the kitchen and cafeteria. So that's what we're working on right now, getting a firm date to the district to finish that. We're looking at that for early October. The auditorium is progressing along. That's slated for graduation of next year to be open. So we have a target of May 27th to be complete, to allow time for punch lists and finishing touches to have that ready for graduation. We took on a guidance center, so that was not in the original schedule for this year because some of the other work that moved around in the schedule, we've moved that up. So we're waiting on some materials as far as frames, but we're thinning the walls up, trying to get that as damp as possible so the council can move into that space. We also took over art rooms 158, 159, right down the hall. Those were spaces that were available. It gave us opportunity to create some swing space. So we've gotten the abatement, there was some unforeseen abatement in there, and demolition. The abatement is done. You'll see your plastics still up, they'll turn that down tomorrow, continue the demolition. And what that does is come September, it gives the opportunity of where do we go next? Where do we keep it productive? We get those spaces ready, and then the other areas, the other art room, we move over, and we take that space on before everybody's prepared for throughout the year. And we'll just keep going that way as we give the updates on the board reports. What's the next step? Where are we going from here? Overall, project, the engineering, the project, I'll let Rod, Robert, give you an update on that.
So, yeah, as the engineer, kind of responsible for a lot of things in terms of the requested information, kind of document management, correspondence, and then budget are kind of those kind of key pillars of what the project engineer fills. So in terms of RFIs, there have been quite a lot so far. RFIs is an acronym for Requested Information. That's the contractor's formal way to ask a question, and that response, you know, becomes part of the contract document. So there have been, you know, quite a lot of RFIs, there's good content in them, and really what I wanted to highlight here is that the design team has been turning them around in a very timely and expeditious manner, which is key because that allows work to continue in the field. So they want to give credit to the design team there. In terms of cement status, so you can kind of see overall, we're about 40% complete. That is a little bit lower than where we'd like to be. Contractually, contractors have a timeframe that they had to get their cements in. We have since exceeded that timeframe. We did put the contractors on notice by issuing formal letters that they're behind on cements and that they need to amplify efforts here. So we're hoping by the next board report, and we are pretty confident that the way the metrics are moving now, by the next board report, that percentage complete should be substantially higher. Excuse me. It is nice to see that we have some of the closeout cements already in. You know, typically this is always at the very end, so some credit to the contractors for getting, we always say, closeout starts day one, but that's never actually realistic here. In terms of contractor payment applications, so those come in on a monthly basis here. To date, we're about 6.2% paid out. Lot of project left to go. Change order summary here, so there's, you know, change orders come up for a variety of reasons, discovered conditions that Vince mentioned, things that are changed in the field or, you know, maybe gaps in the drawings there. So that's where our change order summary comes. You can kind of see, as of the board report, we're recording 29 potential change orders. So we don't want to confuse it with our nomenclature. There's potential change orders, and then there's what you would call your bona fide change orders, right? Those are what gets sent to SED and whatnot. So as of right now, we have four change orders issued to date, and that largely captured the credits we took back for the steam hot water conversion, which we needed to, you know, award contracts. So you can kind of see that parentheses represents a credit. So far, we've realized a credit of, you know, $1.65 million there.
Can you explain that a little more? So is everybody aware, when we award this project, the money was tight? So one of the things was, let's go back to the drawing board, how do we open up savings in the projects? We set a goal, and working with the contractors very diligently, we've exceeded that goal in terms of realizing those savings, and that's what that represents on the board report.
Yeah. My apologies, I thought that might have been brought up at a previous board report, so we was just trying to build on that. But yes, for those that may not have been aware, as Vince described, these were necessary in order to kind of restore our construction contingency, which is how we fund these change orders in the first place. So, you know, that was pretty key to setting this up for the future. And then just, you know, a quick budget update, more or less, we're set to meet next week, but we reconcile with the district on a monthly basis, so capturing expenditures to date so that our incidental soft costs, if you will, are aligned with the district's, just so that we're managing the budget appropriately, you know, if we need to move funds around and stuff. So that kind of sums up a lot of the information on the board report. I'd love to open it up if you have questions, things you want us to expand on.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along, next on the agenda, presentation, special recognition award for Kara Kitchen.
All right. So we're, like every district in New York State, every school board, every school, every district is now supposed to have a, required to have a student board member. So one of the nice things in Canistota is, this is, for four years, we've actually had a student board member. And boards saw the value of having that representation on the board, so it's not a new thing for us, it's been a great thing. I think it's, there's been really a consensus of that feeling, that it's been a very positive experience for the board and for the district. So this year, we were really fortunate that we had Kara as our representative. Couldn't think of a better student to represent the district, represents the district so well in so many ways, and her accomplishments speak for themselves that are too long to list. If you look at the way she's been recognized over this past year, it's been from her extensive amount of community service to participation on this board, to involvement in school activities, Kara really, again, you couldn't have a better representative. And so on behalf of the district, we want to thank you for the way you've represented the school all your time through in Canistota, and really appreciate your participation as a board. So congratulations. We know you're going to be a great success in everything you do, and we appreciate everything you've done. We want to present you this certificate of appreciation for all of your efforts in working with our school board, and we also want to make sure that we have a picture. So I think Mrs. Henner is going to orchestrate a picture now where we can have a picture with the board and Kara.
We're going to assemble here in front of this bookshelf, and have this in the board. I want it to look about, so I'm going to have the poor gentleman stand in the back. I've got a height requirement. Can you slide a little bit over so I don't get the word former? A little bit more.
It's a kind of shuffle.
And the rule of thumb is if you can see my face and my neck from the head up, then we can see you, so thank you. Scott Blancher. Cheese, cheese, cheese. Thank you. Congratulations, Kara.
You can give a speech too, if you want.
I'm saying you've been practicing.
Okay. Let's see, F old, there is no old business, so section G, new business. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following consent agenda items, 1 through 9. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, student board member update. We do not have a student board member appointed yet. I'll throw it out to Kara for old time's sake, if you want to come up here and say something. No? Okay. Moving on, committee reports. Let's start with, let's go finance committee. Mark?
We haven't met yet, but I know we did get notice from the state about, not from the state, so that will be happening this year. Sorry, Tracy. But, yeah. The first meeting is in October.
First meeting was when?
Scheduled for October.
Okay. Policy committee, Courtney.
We have not met yet, but we have our schedule of dates that are ready to go. Our next meeting will be in November.
Okay. Academic committee, Scott.
We met on August 4th. We reviewed ongoing work with regard to the graduation standards, the new portrait of our graduate items, and how our programs are positioned to support those. We discussed ongoing work with student retention and remediation. Saw an overview of the current life cycle for professional development in the district, how those things are identified and selected, and reviewed instructional planning tools, you know, pacing guides, strategy, toolboxes, sample plans and such that teachers have available to them. We're looking at curriculum status going forward.
Facilities, that's me. We've had three meetings, July 14th, July 28th, and just a couple hours ago. Basically, you know, to spare you any of the rehashing some of the details, I'm just going to kind of defer you to what Vince was, Vince and Robert were reporting earlier. As far as what we're basically kind of keeping track of is, you know, dates when things are going to be ready, what this bill, what it's going to look like when kids, teachers and kids come back to school. But as far as the details of where the project stands, I think Vince and Robert did a great job summing that up. Okay, safety committee, Jeff.
We haven't met yet.
Okay. You're cruising.
I'm going to just test the camera.
Okay. Board comment period, anything?
As many of us did, I attended the community cookout. That is not a family barbecue of any kind and name. And just thank you to everyone who made that possible. It was a great event, and seeing all the different organizations and families coming out, I enjoy it every year, it was great this year. Nice to have it outdoors for once.
Yeah, it was well-attended. I myself was in attendance, and I was remarked about how well it was attended. Good job. Anybody else? Nothing? Okay, next is the superintendent's report.
So echo Mr. Blancher's comment about the community cookout. Nice turnout. It was the fourth time we've done it, first time since the first one where we could be outside, so it was very nice. We were worried that, yeah, the weather, the rain was going to hold off, and then was the smoke going to, were we going to be smoked inside? But that day was nice and clear, and number I got was over 550 meals were served that night, so give us some, we didn't know the exact attendance of number of people who in total were there, but it was well, you know, into the hundreds, and it was great to see people come to what has become our annual summer tradition, so. Also, something that we've had going for a number of years, we've had another successful summer program wrapped up. We had close to 100 students this year were participating in that program, and it was good to have another year where we invited our students back in, and we didn't want anybody getting rusty over the summer, and sort of kept them in the school routine and went well. Our opening of school is already just around the corner, just a few weeks away, and it's a relatively early start, since Labor Day is the first, and so the first day back for students, and I'm sure people are already aware of it, but to reiterate, is Tuesday the 2nd for staff. Our students will be coming back on Thursday, the 4th. So for students and staff enjoying summer, it's coming up, but there's still a little bit of time, still a few weeks, so still a good amount of summer that we still have left.
Can we get them in sooner?
Got by on tears.
Anybody want to make a motion for earlier start to school? You might be in trouble when you go home with your kids. And then we, it was great to have Kara here, recognize her for her contributions. Having that position is not new to Canistota. We are actively working to get everything situated for our representation for this upcoming school year. Part of that, how we arrive at who is the representative, is tied to, there's certain aspects of it related to being elected to by their peers and things like that. So we're getting that squared away, but we anticipate that we'll likely have our student rep here for September, starting in the September 4th meeting. Kara can come back and mentor them or give them some pointers from college. But, and, you know, again, we get to this point of the year, you heard about some of the work that's going on as far as, you know, the facilities, and every day, you know, you see some new things happening, it's been great to watch, but really want to compliment the work of Nick Campbell and his team are doing, because they're doing the normal stuff of getting the school ready, but they're having to do a lot of, you know, shifting around and really being nimble as far as being able to adjust, because they're having to adjust their work around significant amounts of work that's going on and still supporting that work that's going on. I look at Tracy, and Tracy is well, has been heavily involved with that. So I just want to thank our team, and not just those teams, but the office teams, the people who are here during the year, there's substantial disruption to their operation. So everybody's really done a nice job continuing the work of the district that has to happen is still going on, and things have been, knock on wood, have been relatively smooth. And then also, I'd just like to thank the staff who's been in doing work preparing for the new year. There's been a lot of our staff in doing instructional-related work to prep for the new year, working with their colleagues, working on their curriculum, and just making sure that we're in good shape to open the year in a great way. So appreciate everybody's efforts. Sometimes people don't understand the breadth of all the things that go on during the summer. It's still a very, very busy time, and a lot of good work is getting done, so appreciate everybody's efforts.
That's what I have to do. Okay. All right, moving on to personnel recommendations. All appointments are pending clearance on fingerprinting. Retirement and resignations. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Lindsay Bazan's letter of resignation as an elementary teacher effective July 6th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Jerry McDonough's letter of resignation as a school monitor effective July 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Chelsea Vassali's letter of resignation as a teacher assistant effective July 15th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Angela Stotts's letter of resignation as a school monitor effective August 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Alyssa Anich's letter of resignation as a 7 through 12 math teacher effective August 31st, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Permanent appointments. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Austin Meyer as a permanent teacher aide, school monitor, at 1775 per hour effective September 1st, 2025, with a 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Angela Stotts as a permanent teacher aide, school monitor, at 1775 per hour effective September 1st, 2025, with a 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Haley Curtis on a probationary basis in the tenure area of health, with the understanding that the named individual has applied for a New York State certification appropriate to or required for that position, that the probationary appointment shall commence on September 1st, 2025, that the probationary appointment shall expire on August 31st, 2029, and that the named individual, to be eligible for an appointment to tenure upon expiration of the probationary period, it shall be necessary, but not sufficient, that the individual has received an annual professional performance review rating of either effective or highly effective in three of the four years of the probationary service, and has not received an annual professional performance rating of ineffective in the final year of the probationary appointment. As based on ratings derived in compliance with Education Law Section 3012D at Step 2, $50,361. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Christopher Rudiak on a probationary basis in the tenure area of elementary, with the understanding that the named individual holds New York State certification appropriate to or required for that position, that the probationary appointment shall commence on September 1st, 2025, that the probationary appointment shall expire on August 31st, 2028, and that the named individual, to be eligible for an appointment to tenure upon expiration of the probationary period, it shall be necessary, but not sufficient, that the individual has received an annual professional performance review rating of either effective or highly effective in two of the three years of the probationary service, and has not received an annual professional performance rating of ineffective in the final year of the probationary appointment, as based on ratings derived in compliance with Education Law Section 3012D at Step 9, Bachelor plus Masters plus 30 hours at $62,567. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby amend Melinda Reed's permanent teaching appointment from a 7 through 12 ELA teacher to a special education teacher with no change to probationary period or salary effective September 1st, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Substitute appointments. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following substitutes. Kaylee Gallagher is a non-certified subteacher at $120 per day effective August 13th, 2025. Alexandra Lembo is a long-term non-certified subteacher at $249 per day effective September 1st, 2025. Kelly Brennan is a retired, excuse me, retired certified subteacher at $160 per day effective July 1st, 2025. Alicia Simmons is a non-certified subteacher at $120 per day effective August 13th, 2025. Charlie Frick is a certified subteacher at $140 per day effective August 13th, 2025. Deanna Dunn is a long-term certified subteacher at $257 per day effective September 1st, 2025. Daniel Matthews is a subcleaner at $18.45 per hour effective August 13th, 2025. Wendy Stevens is a subcleaner at $18.45 per hour effective August 13th, 2025. Kristen Reese Summers is a subcleaner at $18.45 per hour effective August 13th, 2025. Ayesha Kashif is a non-certified subteacher at $120 per day effective August 13th, 2025. And Patricia Vicaro is a non-certified subteacher at $120 per day and subtypist at $17.25 per hour effective August 13th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No civil service appointments, okay. Moving on, coaching. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following paid and unpaid coaches for the 2025-2026 school year as per the attachments. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
移动
Second?
第二
All those in favor?
挽
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board is hereby appoint 2025-2026 mentors. Daphne Baldwin Tully, Brianna Riggs, Rain Martino, Amanda Schlegel, Justin Karosik, Megan Hoyt, Tina Davis, Jennifer Kirak, Brian Dwyer, Linda Sarazia, and Tracy Timmons. Do I have a motion?
移动
Second?
第二
All those in favor?
挽
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, based on instructional staffing needs of the district, the board recommends the discontinuance of service of Raymond Garcia's first, for full-time seven through twelve mathematics teaching position effective June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion?
移动
Second?
第二
All those in favor?
挽
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board is hereby appoint the following co-curricular recommendation for the 2025-2026 school year as per the attachment. Do I have a motion?
移动
Second?
第二
All those in favor?
挽
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, public comment period. And I do have a request for public comment. Mr. DeMeo?
My name is Eric DeMeo. I'm the girls' varsity basketball coach. I've been coaching in the district at various levels since 2017. I'm here tonight because I have questions about the care and safety of our gym floors. Before I go any further, I want to make it very clear that I'm not here to disparage any individual or any department within our district. Specifically, this is in no way a indictment on Mr. Coretta and his school. Donny is always taking care of me and my kids the whole time I've been here. But I do have concerns for our student's safety, and I believe that as a school district, we need to learn to take care of our floors in a more effective way. I'm not an expert in any means in gym floor maintenance, but I have learned some news and don'ts by researching this subject over the last few years. I understand that we are eventually replacing at least one of our gym floors, which is great and long overdue. I assure you, all three of our floors need to be replaced at some point. This is even, this should be more of a motivation for our district, which means not only, the most important thing for me is the, is the students' safety, but we need to learn how to protect our investment member. I have information I'd love to share with you, we can't do it three minutes, but I just think something we need to look into, our floor is, you know, in the course of the basketball season, we'll play on, including our floor, we'll play on ten or twelve different basketball floors, and ours is consistently the worst one we play on. It's very slippery. All of our, I'm speaking specifically here about ours, but we play a lot of gyms, it's just as bad, if not worse, and it's something that needs attention because it's a safety matter for our kids.
Moving along, future dates. August 20th and 21st is new teacher orientation. September 2nd is opening day. September 4th, classes begin. September 9th, 2025 is our next regular Board of Education meeting at 6:30 PM right here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter to the executive session to discuss employment history of a particular individual. Do I have a motion?
That motion?
Second?
第二
All those in favor?
挽
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in executive session, and we will not be returning. Thank you.